Good morning. I'll call to order the special hearing of the Montecito Planning Commission for October 26th. Welcome. If you'd all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think the first order of business is Mr. Villalobos will give us the TV coverage.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSP-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Poak, San Inez Valley, San Maria, and Orchid areas. Rebroadcasts of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSP-TV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call. Commissioner Gottstinker.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Burrows.
Here.
Commissioner Idelson.
Here.
And Commissioner Overall.
Here.
Thank you.
We're going to add something or not? Okay. I think we'll move next to the Agenda Status Report.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we have five items on your agenda. We're prepared to move forward with all but the Caltrans widening, Highway Widening Project briefing. We do have an unusual item this morning. We have the courtesy review for the Turk-Heslin Nursery Project that the City of Santa Barbara is supporting, and we have Suzanne Regal here to present to your commission. We also noticed this as a joint meeting with the Montecito Board of Architectural Review. I don't think we need to convene the Montecito Board of Architectural Review since we only have one member here, but Mr. Palladini is here on behalf of the MBAR to provide comments as well. So that's the Agenda Status Report. I believe we will be done this morning on our agenda, and I know we will be done by 2:00 because the County Planning Commission will be using this room at 2:00. Just as a heads up on that.
Do you want to talk now about the projection report now?
Yes, sure. As to the projection report, this is the last meeting we have scheduled for the Montecito Planning Commission this year. We've canceled the November 16th meeting. We really don't have any items to bring to your commission on November 16th, and we are going to be using that for the draft Galita Community Plan for the month, for the County Planning Commission to consider. I am not clear whether or not we're going to need a meeting in December, and my recommendation is that we try to select a date to convene a special meeting, and then if we need it, we'll have it, and if we don't, then we will simply cancel that meeting. So I know Mr. Villalobo sent out requests for people to check their calendars and let us know if there are particular dates that do or don't work for you, but I would suggest we look maybe at the second week in December to see if there's a date other than Wednesday, December 14th, that we could meet. My suggestion would be 1st, probably, December 12th, which is a Monday, or December 15th, which is a Thursday.
Let's hear from the commission.
And I believe our council would prefer December 15th, so if that might work with the commission's schedule, and this is just a if needed.
I have a conflict on December, on, no, I don't. It's not December 15th. I'm sorry, I had the wrong month.
Okay.
No, we're, how about everybody else? Commissioner Gottstinker, is that okay with you?
I'm fine.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Tentatively, it is December 15th.
Okay. And we'll let you know as soon as we know whether or not we'll need to use that hearing date. And then, lastly, the commission is scheduled to meet again next year, 2012, the fourth Wednesday of the month, so our first meeting of January will be January 25th.
Okay. Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This is the period reserved for anyone who wishes to bring something to our attention that is not otherwise on the agenda. I don't believe we have any speaker slips. Is there anyone who wants to speak? I see no indication, so I'll close public comment. I'll move to the planning commissioners' informational reports, and that's anything that the commissioners wish to, feel that they should share. Commissioner Idelson?
Yes, I wanted to comment on the Board Supervisors' meeting of October 19th. There was a special award given to Casa del Herrera Foundation, which is the Bass property, and that commendation was part of it initiated by the fact that they had national landmarking, which was several years ago, and it's quite an outstanding place, and it was really quite an honor to see that award granted. This location is at 1387 East Valley, and what happened is that we had all of the family members from the east that made the donation of the property and part of the endowment were there in attendance, and it was really quite spectacular.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? I have one item, and actually, it relates to the Caltrans briefing, which we did not have this morning. That briefing was going to be a report that was focused solely on the Montecito component of the Highway 101 widening, and the representatives from the Montecito Association, which were, who were going to provide that, felt that they weren't at the point where they were ready to do it this month, and the President, Dick Nordland, is out of town, so they asked to continue that to a later date. Subsequent to that, and I failed to communicate that in time to get it removed from the agenda, but subsequent to that, in a meeting that I attended on Monday that included the folks from SB-CAG and Caltrans, they indicated that there are going to be three presentations in the midpart of November. One in Carpinteria, one in Montecito, and I've forgotten right offhand where the other location, Summerlin. The, if my recollection is correct, on the 15th of November, they're going to do a presentation in Montecito. The presentation will not be exactly the same kind of thing that the Montecito Association's group would have done, because that would be focused, not that we're not interested in the entire corridor, but it would have been focused on the Montecito component. The presentation by the Caltrans SB-CAG folks will be for the entire improvement from the Ventura County line up through the Montecito area. So, again, that's November 15th, and I would encourage anybody and everybody to be attuned to this. It's something that's coming in early next year with the Environmental Impact Report, and it is important to our community, so be aware that that date's there, and I'm sure it'll be in the papers. They're going to publicize it, so. Commissioner Gottstinker, you have a comment?
No.
Okay.
Turned it off.
All right. Unless there's something that I missed, we'll close this section. We'll turn next to the minutes, and I assume this is correct, of the August 24th meeting that we held, and not the special meeting that was held, what it was, a couple weeks ago?
Last week.
Last week? Okay. So, any, we're going to review the minutes of August 24th meeting. Any comments, corrections, additions, subtractions on those? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
A second, please.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I am not voting I wasn't present.
That's right.
And, Mr. Chairman, I will have to abstain on item four. I left the hearing early on that day.
So noted. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to Dr. Russell for the Director's Report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair Overall, it's a pleasure to be here. Since August 24th, there have been several board hearings, and I'll go over briefly what transpired at those hearings, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to follow up. On the 6th of September, there was a consistency rezone in the Gaviota area for a project known as Makella, fairly straightforward project. Of something a little bit closer to home was a consideration of the H-LAC's landmarking of the Bryce Cabana, and that was effectively, I'm not sure remanded is the right word, but effectively remanded back to H-LAC to consider whether or not they would consider a place of historic merit as opposed to a landmark for that building.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with the difference between merit and landmark.
Well, landmarking is the higher level, and it, for example, in circumstances where there is a legal nonconforming structure, as is the case with this cabana, which is located on the beach itself, if it's landmarked, it would provide a path possibility, not a definitive path, but a possible path for doing renovations and structural upgrades to a legal nonconforming structure that would not otherwise be allowed by our zoning code. The place of historic merit does not include that path. It is a lower-level note of historic significance, but not the higher formality of a landmark.
Thank you.
The Bogdazarian appeal was to go on that date, but we heard from Mr. Bogdazarian, who had a number of proposals, so that was continued, and we, and it will now be going back in early December, and we're engaged in conversations with Mr. Bogdazarian and his representatives, but right now, the Bogdazarians are very busy working on the new Chipmunk movie, Chipwrecked, and so we have to wait a couple weeks before we can really take, get them, get all the right people in the room. Also on our, any questions on that?
Commissioner Gottstinker?
Yeah, I, you know, when you say the Bogdazarian appeal, just to be clear, is that the appeal of our decisions that were made here, and so that's where the project is, and if that's accurate, is the county still, and the planning department still kind of tracking what's going on there with the rebuilding of walls and doing activities that at least appear, and I'm not going to be, I mean, just like when you walk on the trail and you look over there, it appears that ongoing work is continuing to happen, and that kind of, I don't understand why this whole project is continuing through the process without stopping, you know, and why is it being appealed when, I mean, I just don't understand the process right here, and it's been a year now, as far as I can recall, since when it came here, and we're still in the, you know, so it just occurs, appears to me that there's a little bit of a stalling process going on while the property owner is doing whatever they're doing, and that's a concern, because it really, there are impacts to, you know, the trail and all of the community plan.
Let's, let's let him answer.
Chair Overall, Commissioner Gottstinker, as far as I know, not having been out there in the last week or so, everything that has been done without permits is being considered in the context of what constitutes a valid and appropriate restoration plan. The appeals do, in fact, sometimes get stretched out, and this one is, as opposed to stalling, there were requests for continuance that were approved by the board, so we are following their direction. And also on the 6th, the Climate Action Strategy, the Climate Action Study went to the Board of Supervisors, and it was approved to now embark on the Climate Action Plan, which will set specific GHG reduction targets, as well as a SEQA threshold that can be used, hopefully in a programmatic way, by projects coming through that have to comply with the rules that say you have to do SEQA analysis on GHG. The Redevelopment Agency had the second of a number of ongoing hearings that took certain actions in response to the two laws, SB-X127, six and seven, which allow, AB, pardon me, that allow for the continuation of the RDA or its dissolution. That, on the 13th, there was a project, a general plan amendment rezone in North County called Terrace Villas that was approved. There was a report on historic landmarking incentives that I presented that ranged from the existing assistance-type incentives that are already in place, federal incentives that are already in place, to things that the county could do that are not currently being done to incentivize landmarking, such as the use of the Mills Act, something that I'm very familiar with from San Diego. The decision by the board was that, at this time, options such as the Mills Act, which actually result in a loss of revenue to the county, are probably not warranted, so they directed us to look at other issues such as putting plaques, becoming part of the certified local government program, which is a state certification that the Office of Historic Preservation gives, sort of the, doing something but not the things which would cost revenue to the county. And we'll be taking some, we'll be taking recommendations back to the board sometime next year.
Excuse me, Dr. Russell, Chair. The Mills Act is in place. It's available for people who can come under that act. Is it that they're suspending that act while we're trying to raise more revenue? Is that what you just said?
Chair Overall, Commissioner Phillips, it is my understanding that the Mills Act, to be in place, has to be implemented through an ordinance by the county.
Oh, we don't have one?
And we do not have one.
Really?
So they chose not to direct staff to bring back such an ordinance.
I see.
The, on the 20th of September, we reported on, again, on hydraulic fracturing, and interestingly enough, the company that was doing most of the hydraulic fracturing, well, had been doing, we're aware of all the hydraulic fracturing, both here and in Monterey County, has now abandoned their efforts to do so in the Monterey Formation. Nevertheless, we will be bringing back shortly some code changes that makes it explicitly clear that hydrologic fracturing requires an oil drilling and production plan, which is a higher-level environmental review and one which requires the approval of the Planning Commission, so that any and all issues associated with such a practice would be fully vetted in a public context. On the 4th of October, we had the third RDA hearing, and that was the hearing where the board took the formal action to enter into the alternative redevelopment association procedure, which means that if we make payments to the state on an annual basis, first about 1.9 million, and then subsequently forward $150,000 a year, we will be able to continue the RDA, although in a somewhat diminished capacity, given that we have to make these payments to the state. That passed, and now we await the decision of the State Supreme Court that is considering the constitutionality of both of those bills, and they're having oral arguments on the 10th of November, so we may hear actually in advance of their originally stated deadline of January 15th. And that could go, they're both constitutional, they're both not constitutional, or one is and one isn't, so we wait to find out what the fate of the RDA is.
Commissioner Burrows?
Do you know who the parties are in that appeal?
It's the California Redevelopment Association and also an entity called Monsanto's, and I'm not sure who that is, or who they are affiliated with. Also on the 4th, the board approved procedures in our zoning code for appeals and processing of certificates of compliance. The zoning code amendments, which your commission considered, also went to the board, and some of them were just fine, and others of them were, needed further discussion, and so we're going back on, in an upcoming, soon going back, with a package which we think will be acceptable to the board, although there's always the possibility that they might tell us to consider other changes in a future action.
Can you, Dr. Russell, could you give us any indication of which items were controversial? Or?
I'll have Ms. Black address that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the Board of Supervisors had a number of questions about, about six or seven of the components of the ordinance amendment package. I don't believe most of those questions were substantive. There were two where we've provided additional language to the board to consider on Tuesday. One is on phased development plans and conditional use permits, providing an outer limit of time to complete the phased conditional use permit or development plan, and the other was on some components of, surprise, surprise, the parking, storage, and storage of materials portion of the ordinance, and I think their primary issues were, number one, they wanted to mirror in the county's land use development code and the coastal zoning ordinance, your recommendation that you adopted for the, or that you recommended adoption for Montecito, which was that stored cars be in the 1-2-3 rather than 1-3-5 cadence. They requested some additional clarification on paving and impervious versus impervious material. They requested some clarification of what constitutes screening of vehicles, and wanted to make sure that tarps weren't considered screening of a vehicle, and it escapes, oh, and the final one, the final issue was counting boats, trailers, recreational vehicles in the number of vehicles that can be stored on site, in the stored cars, so those wouldn't be in addition to the numbers that we came up with. Our recommendation to the board is to adopt the ordinances essentially as they were submitted by both the County Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission, but for the change to the 1-2-3, and refer those other changes that they may want us to make. We don't have a consensus of the board yet in that regard, but if they'd like us to make or consider those other changes, then we would bring those back to the Montecito Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission for a recommendation on further changes.
Great. That's pretty good, off, right off the cuff.
That is, better than I could do. Also on the 4th was the consideration for the ordinance for regulating medical marijuana dispensaries, and the board gave us direction that I'm sure you're well aware of, that we should, in fact, bring back an ordinance which bans medical marijuana dispensaries, and that was the subject of a planning, a special hearing for your commission, as well as hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and we will be going back on November 1st with that, with the ordinance banning dispensaries. On the 18th, I made a presentation on the, on a project which is, has been in the press to a certain extent, which is the lost city excavations in Guadalupe Dunes area regarding the Cecil B. Demille set, which is buried in the sand out there in the excavation thereof. The, we are due to an error that was made that unfortunately erroneously exempted that project from a permit, we, by staff, we're processing the permits necessary for that project and should be in place just after Thanksgiving. And finally, I'd like to turn my report over to Ms. Black for a brief update on the Miramar.
I was, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I was a bit surprised nobody asked about the article on the Miramar in the Montecito Journal. I think probably most of you saw it, saw that article, and perhaps you didn't ask because it speaks for itself. The Caruso team requested that the county review the permit and their permits and determine what they would need to do to be able to demolish the hotel, what conditions they would need to satisfy to do that, because they are interested in reviewing whether or not they might be able to accomplish that highly-desired objective of the community. So, we did, we did quite a bit of work on what would be necessary to move forward, and we did determine that there were several fairly extensive conditions that would need to be complied with. Probably the most significant is the payment of the lower-cost visitor-serving overnight accommodations fee. That's almost 1.4 million dollars, and that would need to be paid before we could issue a, approve and issue a coastal development permit to allow for demolition. There are a number of other conditions that would come into play with demolition, some air quality mitigations, some biological mitigations, some cultural resource things. There are a number of other conditions. The Caruso team is considering the requirements that would be necessary in order for them to move forward, and they expect to be able to come up with an answer as to whether or not they can move forward within the next several weeks. So, I think it's a positive sign. I think it shows that they really want to do this, and it's really a matter of whether or not they can, they can make it work. So, I'm pleased to report that. I wish I could report the conclusion of it, but I'm not quite there yet.
You'll get that opportunity. The, want to ask a question. Do I recall correctly that in order to change the 1,004 mitigation provision to come after demolition, it would have to go back through the Coastal Commission? Is that more or less correct?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, it wouldn't necessarily have to go back through the Coastal Commission. This is a permit that was appealable to the Coastal Commission. It's not a permit that was required to be issued by the Coastal Commission, and it, in fact, wasn't issued by the Coastal Commission. That being said, they had a lot of input into this permit condition. It's very clear that it's required before the first land use, or coastal development permit is issued, and I think it would be complicated to try and change the timing of that condition. So, I believe that the Caruso team is looking at it with the requirement that that payment be made, not trying to modify that requirement.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. On behalf of the community, thank you for that report. Just for the record, the Montecito Messenger.
Oh, was it the Messenger? I'm sorry.
Has followed this for a very long time, and we also appreciate the work of the Montecito Journal, but in regard to the cover page that we recently had and the work that's being done, that's being done by the Montecito being done by the Montecito Messenger.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. I know I saw it somewhere, I just, I got it online, so sometimes it's not as obvious to me.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you. The fee you're referencing, should the Caruso team down the road decide not to proceed but to sell the property? Would the new owner have to duplicate that fee?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, that's a very good question. No. Not if they built the hotel, that would then be essentially entitled. So, we would be essentially issuing a coastal development permit for the construction of the hotel, demolition, construction of the hotel, but it would be in a phased manner. So, the first phase would be demolition, and certain conditions would have to be complied with. The next phase would be grading and construction of the hotel, and there would be a number of other conditions that would need to be satisfied. So, they wouldn't have to resatisfy that payment.
You're, I misunderstood what you're saying. You're saying if Caruso satisfied that condition-
Yes.
-it would not have to be-
Right.
-duplicated?
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Moving along to our standard agenda, Mr. Villalobos, would you like to read into the record item number one, which is unique for us?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chair. The following is a courtesy review of a project under the jurisdiction of the city of Santa Barbara. The proposal involves a mixed-use project along Coast Village Road. The purpose of the hearing is to allow the Montecito Planning Commission and county residents the opportunity to provide comments to the city of Santa Barbara regarding this development proposal.
Before we proceed, I'd like to invite Mr. Palladini to come up and join us.
Chair Overall and fellow commissioners-
Good morning.
My name is Suzanne Regal. I'm a planner for the city of Santa Barbara. As you know, the project site is located in the city limits. It's currently occupied by the Turk Heslin Nursery, and is, you can see the city limit boundary is delineated in purple on the slide. The site is located at the corner of Coast Village Road and Coast Village Circle, an aisle highlighted in the aqua color. It is in the non-applicable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. It is Zone C1, which is limited commercial. The project proposes to demolish all the existing structures on the site, remove two trees, and construct an 11,500-square-foot mixed-use building above a 13,300-square-foot subterranean garage. The applicant team will provide site plans and elevations following my brief presentation. The proposed mix of uses includes 3,500 square feet of retail, 3,000 square feet of office space, a 42-seat restaurant, and two townhouses. The breakdown for each of the proposed uses is shown on the chart for the parking. In total, the project will propose 42 parking spaces, which is in compliance with the city's parking ordinance. The discretionary applications that are required are review by the Architectural Board of Review, modification for encroachments into the 10-foot front setback, transfer of existing developments of 2,800 square feet to the site, a development plan approval for a net increase of 5,800 square feet of develop, non-residential development, and a subdivision map for residential and non-residential condominiums. It will also require a coastal development permit for new development, the coastal zone. The project will be following a review process listed on this slide, which the application has already completed the city's pre-application review process. It has received a conceptual review by the city's Architectural Board of Review, and per a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county that was created earlier this year, the applicant has come to the Montecito Planning Commission for comments, as will any other project along Coast Village Road that requires Planning Commission or Staff Hearing Office approval from the city. Once the application has been deemed complete, actually, I should, I skipped a step. Step four was that the application go through the city's development application review process, a 30-day review process, which it is currently going through, which should conclude later this week. Once the application has been deemed complete, it will go to the city's Planning Commission, and then follow up with the city's Architectural Board of Review to obtain all the necessary approvals. In addition to these required reviews, the applicant has chosen to go to the Montecito Land Use Committee. They have gone there twice. They've also gone to the Citizens Planning Association Board once. The minutes of the Montecito Land Use Committee reflect that the committee reviewed two different versions of this project, and that the project was generally supported, and they had raised some concerns over time, which included eliminating a story, as well as changing some of the access points to roof structures and elevator towers. The city's Planning Commission will consider the project's consistency with the local zoning ordinance and building codes and general, and local coastal plan policies. The project will require findings for development plan approval, transfer of existing development rights, and modification of the front yard setback and a subdivision map. The level of environmental review has not yet been determined, but the applicant has demonstrated that the project does provide adequate onsite parking, and will not, is not anticipated to create traffic that would impede coastal access. It has adequate water and sewer available to serve the proposed project. It would not adversely impact public views from U.S. Highway 101 to the mountains, or from Coast Village Road to U.S. Highway 101. We did receive a letter from John Wallace, representing Protect Our Village, that was in, generally in support of the project, but did raise a few concerns on the design. In summary, staff request that the commission receive comment, and those comments will be forwarded to the city's Planning Commission prior to approval.
I think the first thing to do is to acknowledge the cooperation that the city and the county have evidenced by bringing us together and having this opportunity, so that is to be commended. And I think we'll reserve our questions until we've heard Mr. Cornell's presentation.
Chair Overall, members of the commission and Architectural Board, my name is Brian Cornell, and we're happy to be here to review this project. We actually wanted to come a little bit earlier in September, but you canceled that meeting, so we've, and you see that we have been busy working along the way with various groups. This is the site as we know it today, the Turk Heslin Nursery, which we know has been there for 45 years. It's actually not been owned by the nursery for many, many years. This is the entrance. With me today is Alberto Volner, who is the property owner, Ken Marshall, who is our environmental planner, and Phil Suting, who is our landscape architect, and they'll be available to answer any questions. I'll tell you that the very first thing that Alberto conveyed to me before we started working on this is that he did not want to try to push the limits. He had seen what had happened just down the street, and why we're here today, and he wanted to design a project that was beautiful, timeless, responsible, met the community concerns. He is in this for the long haul, and that was very, very important to him, as well as, you know, environmental sustainability is something that he is passionate about. So, that made us very excited about working on this project, and we're really thrilled about what you're gonna, what we're gonna show you today. This is panning the front along Coast Village Road, and this is the magnolia that was mentioned. And actually, you can see that somewhere along the line, the Turk Heslin Nursery planted this in a pot that's in that island. So, really, what we're doing is just planting a tree in the ground. And then, of course, the first thing I noticed was this large skyline podicarpus tree. If we continue down a little ways, you can see that it nestles right up against the Janine's bakery patio space. And when we looked at the survey, we realized, this is the podicarpus in site plan, we realized that the patio was actually encroaching onto our property by quite a bit. So, we went between the two properties, which I'm gonna show you an image of that right now. And this is the podicarpus tree. It's a little hard to see, but it's actually virtually planted in, against a retaining wall, and this is where, about where the property line runs through. We had an arborist, Peter Nguyen, look at the podicarpus, and although it is healthy and obviously quite large, it's very questionable the way it is growing, it's a liability to the patio. One of the very first people that Alberto spoke to was the bakery, and obviously, they did not want to lose their deck. They really didn't like the tree very much. So, after assessing it fully, we decided that the tree should go, that the deck should remain, and we should work out something with Janine's to allow it to remain. And it's probably gonna have to go through its own permit process, by the way, through the city, and that we would be able to plant a new, more appropriate skyline tree on our property in a better location as part of the project development. And you'll see on the landscape plan that we're proposing that to be a large Monterey Cypress. So, we knew also that to accommodate parking, we were gonna have to dig a big hole in the ground. So, you can see how the hole will accommodate that new tree, the new large tree. And this is the parking plan. As Suzanne mentioned, we have 40 spaces that are underground, which accommodate the restaurant and the retail office. The restaurant is based on seats, so we've planned a restaurant that is around 1,300 square feet, but has about 800 square feet of outdoor patio, and would have the 42 seats. And then, the retail office is parked at one space per 250 square feet. The access to the parking, it actually worked convenient because Coast Village Circle falls away, so this is the ramp down into that parking. It's fairly straightforward. You can see the elevator access then up to the main level. Then, we would build a podium that would be at the elevation of Coast Village Road. Here's the elevator again for reference, and we created a little passeo to gain access to Coast Village Road as well. So, this is the restaurant on the corner, the outdoor seating, the retail on the ground floor, and then, as was Suzanne mentioned, we have two residential units, two two-bedroom residential units that are tucked in the back, and they actually have access via sort of a little private drive that comes up from a higher elevation off Coast Village Circle. One of the other important things this project is doing is accommodating the city's pedestrian master plan, which dictates a 12-foot sidewalk along Coast Village Road. So, that is showing that 12-foot sidewalk, and it's important to note here that the setback, which is 10 feet, you can see that we're having to pull our buildings back further than the 10 feet to accommodate that 12-foot sidewalk and necessary planting. And then, finally, this is the area where the mod is. We basically have a, an accessible ramp that comes down from the elevator to Coast Village Circle, and because that construction exceeds, I think it's 30 inches, or 15? 10. 10 inches. We have to get a modification for that. So, that's our only modification, which I think is a good thing. The landscape plan really shows it more beautifully. This is that new Monterey Cypress, the magnolia, which would be replaced in that, in that planting island. Just going back a slide real quick, I also want to mention we're adding a parking space, a public parking space here along Coast Village Road, because the island right now is oddly configured, and we can easily preserve the island and gain a space. That is where a curb cut is for the nursery right now. Oops, now I have to go back all through these slides. I apologize for that. And then, of course, we're adding street trees. The street tree committee at the city has also reviewed this, and the recommendation is to do crepe myrtle. And we also have new trees along Coast Village Circle, and this green area here is where all of the stormwater detention is going to be accumulated on the site. But you can see that we're really imagining a beautiful courtyard back here for the residences, and flagstone paving that would reach to that new widened sidewalk along Coast Village Road. So, just kind of running through some of the, oh, last thing, actually, I skipped the second floor. This is the second floor of the residential, and then, of course, the office upstairs. There's a balcony here that serves the office and looks down over that courtyard. And then, finally, we are proposing rooftop decks for these residences, because they're tucked in the back there, and there's the potential for really beautiful mountain views over the, over the commercial portion. We are advocating that we have these outdoor living spaces that are up on the roofs of those two-bedroom units. There's been some discussion about the stair towers and whatnot reaching those, and I think you'll see that we have mitigated that concern by lowering, there won't be really any stair tower that will be visible. So, here's the elevation along Coast Village Road, and, you know, I was struck by how some of the best buildings along Coast Village Road are really quite diminutive in scale. They have a lovely character. We've incorporated a Monterey balcony into one of these elements, but we intentionally broke the building up so that it felt like it was smaller parcels. The height of the building, the maximum height from Coast Village Road is 28 feet, and of course, the restaurant on the corner is considerably less than that, is a one-story element. Looking at the Coast Village Circle side, here, you can really see dramatically how Coast Village Circle drops away. This, by the way, is our neighbor to the south. This is that little driveway entrance up to the residential garages, and then, this is the opening into the parking that is underground below. If I cut a section through like this, you can see how the parking sits completely below the project, and the grade of the site is approximately like this. It drops about 6 feet from Coast Village Road down to the southern edge of the property. Back to that Coast Village Circle elevation, and then, to the back, where we are adjacent to our neighbor, there's the 28-foot height, and there's concern, there was concern expressed by John Wallace about the overall height of the building. Unfortunately, from this side, because the site drops away, if I measure the height from my neighboring ground up to the top, it ends up being 37 feet. But, you know, the reality is that in this configuration, we have that existing building, and they have an existing retaining wall that will be planted out, that we've held our building away from, and this is actually the existing view of that condition. So, where that building really is taller than the community's perception of 28 feet, it's really gonna be just from the back parking lot area of this site, and then, the adjoining site that is to the west. And the planting and whatnot that is along there, we hope to retain.
Brian, what's the height of the adjacent building to the south?
That building, I believe, is measured from grade as close to the 45-foot allowable height.
Thank you.
It is three stories. So, there was, staff asked us, city staff asked us to look at the potential of mountain view blockage, so we created this visual, this is the, you really, it's very hard to see this, you can't see the site northbound, southbound, you get a very quick glimpse of it, which is what this is, but that basically is the project superimposed into that image, so you can see, these are the roofs of the residential units, and that it's actually slightly below that existing building from this, from this perspective. And then, this is the elevation that would face the building where Janine's is, the west elevation. Another quick section through that courtyard, so you can get a, begin to get a sense of the courtyard space between the commercial and the residential portion. We do have little decks. You can see, this is the condition along that southern property, so this is our neighbor's retaining wall. We would plant this area, and then, we would step the building back an additional six or seven feet beyond our wall to allow for a little bit of outdoor space at the main level of these residential units. This also shows the notion of the rooftop deck that would be on top of those units. Again, the 28-foot height from Coast Village Road, and then, this, just for reference, is what the actual height limit is in this zone, in the C1 zone, which isn't gonna happen. Another section through the courtyard, looking in the other direction, this is looking at that office balcony that looks down into the courtyard. We'd have a fountain and planting in there. And here, you can see the relationship. This is that, this is that area that I showed you the photo of at the beginning of my presentation, between the two buildings. And finally, a section that looks back at the garage doors for the residential units and the courtyard space, entrance to one of the units right here. and the courtyard space, entrance to one of the units right here. We basically eliminated any kind of a stair tower. And by the way, the elevations and things I'm showing you are now a little bit further along than your package that you got because it reflects what has been submitted to the city for the DART application. And one of the things we did was to fix the... I think they were referred to as doghouses, the little stair towers that went up to the And this is just a little movie to show you, to give you a sense, starting from Janine's, of how the project will feel going along Coast Village Road. I think you can get a good sense from this of the massing of how we've broken up the commercial portions and softened that architecture. This is the little passeo back to the elevator. Of course, the restaurant on the corner with its outdoor seating. This is the area here where the modification is required for that ramp, and what we're going to do with that is to use native sandstone to soften that wall, the little ramp or the driveway up to the residential, and then, of course, the garage below that. So now we're going to zip over to the freeway, you can kind of get a sense again of that massing, and circle back to Coast Village Road. And that really concludes my presentation. We're very excited about the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does the commission have any questions right now?
I don't know. Brian, would you happen to know the height of the hotel from Coast Village Road that's next door, this to the south? Do you have any idea?
No, I don't. I believe it's... Is it four stories?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's got to be close to fifty-five, sixty feet if it's four stories, I would imagine.
Okay.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you. The restaurant, is that a six-sided structure? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes. I'll just move here to get to a actual plan. Oops, wrong way.
My question is, does the... I think it's a liquor store across the street also have that same configuration that aren't...
Yes. This is six-sided, and you know, it's interesting because this really was... I was inspired by the geometry here because this... The way these property lines work, it almost works out perfectly of the angle of a hexagon. And a hexagon is actually kind of a cool thing when you look at the history of hexagons and things. So it really works quite well, you know, incorporating that element.
So you like that look where across the street it's the same elevation feel?
Well, I don't know. You know, I don't know. I mean, across the street, of course, it is segmented into three sections, but I'm not sure it's a full hexagon. But it is, you know, segmented. But I'd certainly be open to thoughts on this. Again, this is, we are conceptual, but we do want to have, you know, something at that corner that really is the marker to the project because I think that it's, you know, it's a very important corner, and there's going to be a lot of space in front of it by virtue of the way the geometry of that corner works.
Brian, you had a slide that shows the configuration of the restaurant from the site plan. If you could bring it up, maybe I just want to ask a couple of questions related to it.
Keep going the wrong way. It's easier for me to just scroll through than going to my computer, so if you'll bear with me.
Okay. You talk about outdoor space.
Yes.
Maybe you could explain what we're looking at.
So we're... This is, of course, the edge of the sidewalk, so the sidewalk, it's not really shown on this plan, but the sidewalk is... Edge of sidewalk is out here. We're proposing a short, you know, thirty or forty-inch hedge, and then the outdoor seating would be confined in this area here. So it would be at that corner.
And how much of the... I think you said there were forty-two total seats?
Yes.
How much of that is outdoors?
Well, it's, you know, it's hard to know. I mean, we've done seating plans where we could probably get, you know, close to twenty seats outside if we really wanted to, but I think that we'll probably find that balance of what's... What works best inside and outside. And of course, it'll depend a lot on who the restaurateur is, but ultimately, we're limited to that forty-two seats, which is indoor and outdoor.
Then I think, related to the restaurant question, you had a... Actually, I think Ms. Regal had an exhibit that showed the allocation of parking
Yes.
to the different uses, and I don't recall what the number was.
It was four... We have fourteen spaces allocated to the restaurant, which is based on one space for every three seats. So again, down here in the underground parking, we have fourteen for the restaurant, and then we have a total of twenty-six for the office and retail, which is... Which comes up to close to that sixty-six-hundred-square-foot number, which is calculated on the basis of one space for every two-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
And maybe this... I don't know who wants to answer this, but the parking allocation, is that based on a formula that the city prescribes or...
Chair Overhall, it is in the city's parking regulations in our ordinance. Restaurants are one... Four per thousand or one per three seats, whichever is greater, the one per three seats generally works out greater.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, of course, up on top, we have... The city allows, in a mixed-use configuration where the residential square footage is less than half of the overall project, they allow us to park the rest... The residential with just one parking space. So hence, we have the two individual garages which serve the two units.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Palladini?
Thank you, Commissioner Overhall. Brian, could you go back a little bit to the landscape plan?
Yeah, let me do it this way because it'll be quicker. Yes.
You know, what we haven't talked about, if you could just briefly describe kind of the materials palette
Okay.
for the project, roof tile, finished masonry. You mentioned Santa Barbara sandstone. Anything else that might be relevant?
Well, probably one of the most important things that I did not mention is that what we're proposing... You could see from the parking structure that it pretty much is reaching property line to property line, which means that these planters here are actually over the top of that parking structure. So we actually are going to structurally step the parking structure and do slightly raised planters so that we get the planting depth that is necessary to both allow for good plants to grow in these planters, but also to accept rainwater from the rooftops, which I think we need a minimum of close to thirty-six inches of soil. So these will all be sandstone planters, low walls that'll be about eighteen inches high with multiple plants in that area. And I can have Phil speak to the actual plant material. I had mentioned the hedge along here. The flagstone we're imagining is what defines this passeo and then back into the courtyard space. And they'll be planting in the courtyard that'll be predominantly in pots, as well as a fountain element, which I had mentioned. And then we will have some enhanced paving for some of these secondary access points. Again, Janine's patio is right in this area here. We are imagining that the sidewalk just remains the concrete, which is what Coast Village Road is, that that makes the most sense as opposed to imposing a different material. And then we'll have some kind of just simple colored concrete coming up this... The driveway to these garages. And, you know, the detailing, it's very important to me that the detailing all be very traditional and Spanish colonial revival and relatively simple, again. Does that answer your question, Bill? Would you like to have Phil come up?
Well, for example, I mean, the final plaster finish, will it be white colored?
I'm imagining that the building is all white, yes, and that it's obviously smooth-troweled, again, very traditional. One of the... There are a couple of buildings along Coast Village Road that have the Monterey balcony, and interestingly, they're both sort of painted white as opposed to being wood color, which I really like, and I think it's a character of Coast Village Road. So that's what we're proposing here. But yeah, it's very important to Alberto that the detailing be timeless in the Spanish colonial revival tradition.
I don't see any other questions from the commission right at the moment. So I think what I'll do is I'll open this to public comment, and I'll take them in the order that the slips came in. The first is Danny Copas, followed by John Wallace.
Shall I just leave this up?
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm here representing the Montecito Inn, the Coast Village Inn, and Coast Village Business Association. I am president of those entities. I would like to just point out to look around, we have no apparent opposition or controversy. Having those things is a sign of a project that isn't quite right and therefore should not be approved. And this is very clearly not that type of project. This project has been approached with humility and sensitivity and a very simple but often lost concept that introducing something into the community that blends with the character of that community will likely be best for the community and resultingly best for the project and its developers. This project is instantly recognizable as not only being attractive, but something that the community will get great use out of, bringing additional sources of social and economic value that will undoubtedly help stimulate the area as a whole. This is exactly the type of approach every developer should take, exactly the type of project that the area needs and should have. This is the opinion of Coast Village Business Association, which, from what we've seen, approves this project's design with a sincere appreciation to the developer and architect for their taste, their approach, their ability, and their genuine intent on playing a positive role in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. John Wallace, followed by Victoria Green.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is John Wallace, and I'm here on behalf of Protect Our Village. Protect Our Village is a large grassroots community group of members and supporters concerned with oversized development harming the small-town character along Coast Village Road. Our group got its start when the story poles went up and overwhelmed the public sensibilities along Coast Village Road at the Corner Seventy-Six Gas Station Project. First off, I'd like to say that we really, really love this project. It's a fine example of architecture that blends in. Our previous concern had to do with the needlessly tall impact of the staircase enclosures. And in follow-up conversation with Mr. Colonel, he has assured us that they will go forward with weatherproof landings hidden from view so that the building will not exceed twenty-eight feet. And we appreciate these changes Mr. Valner and Mr. Colonel have made and believe it is now a beautiful and approvable project. We are happy to see the project, like the Gunner Pharmacy project, get a green light and so easily become a wonderful addition to our small-scale village. Protect Our Village will continue to oppose buildings that are proposed above thirty-feet on Coast Village Road. There truly are no three-story buildings within a hundred feet of Coast Village Road except for the Montecito Inn, which was built in the twenties before height ordinances. So it really is not there for comparison purposes. There really is no compatibility to be found in this part of town for buildings above thirty feet, and we encourage developers to consider building them elsewhere. We also encourage projects which embrace the neighborhood and don't confront it. We strongly support good growth and applaud Mr. Valner and Mr. Colonel for setting a great example that everyone can learn from. In closing, thank you, commissioners, for your stewardship, and thank you, Alberto and Brian, for enhancing Coast Village Road.
Victoria Green, followed by Carol Leaf, I think it is?
Good morning, commissioners. Victoria Green, on behalf of the Montecito Association. First, I just wanted to acknowledge that this is the first project to come to your planning commission for a courtesy review, a city project coming before you for comments from your commission, the MBAR and the community. And, you know, we're really excited, and we say thank you to the city for facilitating this process, and thank you to the applicant for being the guinea pig and waiting to get here. That said, I think there's a project before you today that may not need a whole lot more input, but, you know, as Ms. Regal pointed out, the Montecito... The project was brought to the Montecito Association's Land Use Committee on two occasions. First meeting, we provided some input to the project. Second meeting, they came back and showed how they'd address some of those concerns in revisions to the project. You know, our committee is pretty satisfied with the appearance of the project at this point and really appreciates the steps that the applicant and his representatives have taken to come to the community, share the project, and be open to input, and I think it'll end in a good result for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Carol Leaf, did I pronounce that?
Yes, Leaf.
Okay.
My name's Carol Leaf, and I don't know how broad I can get in addressing this particular project. It is a beautiful project, but I don't think it's right for Montecito. I sense an overarching change in the community, both with the sort of feckless attitude about the 101 freeway with putting up eleven-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot buildings in place of twenty-two-hundred-square-foot buildings. And I think it's really a general question that if this is the direction that Montecito wants to go, this looks like Brentwood to me, which is also another lovely community. Do we want Montecito to be Brentwood or not? If I were to have my druthers, I would think that one would follow the exact footprint of Turk Heslin, put in a restaurant there if you like, but forty-two more parking spaces and condominiums for sale and all that congestion and traffic while it's being built? I mean, this is a decision that is really a much more comprehensive decision. Where do we want to live? I do not think... I would not like to see that project go up at all. We don't need more traffic. We don't need more restaurants. It doesn't provide any high-quality jobs. There are more low-level jobs. I don't see what it adds to the community. We have enough restaurants. Thanks.
Thank you. I... We have no other speaker slips? Don't have any other speaker slips and no indication, so I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. I neglected at the beginning to have any disclosures on the part of the MBAR or the planning commission, any ex parte communication on this and any of that, so...
Nothing to report?
The only thing I would say is I attended one of the presentations at the Montecito Association. I think it was the July presentation, so I had exposure to it before.
Commissioner Erba?
Mr. Palladini?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that board member Dave Mendro and I also attended one of the land use committee meetings where this project was presented, and we did report our initial thoughts on it back to the MBAR. Thank you.
Okay. Comments for... Or questions, I guess, first?
Just for clarification, I did want to mention that this is not within our jurisdiction. What we have today is a courtesy review, and I appreciate the city of Santa Barbara and the county of Santa Barbara for reviewing this and for giving us this courtesy review. It seems to me that there's a lot of community support for this project, and in my opinion, it is something that can move forward, and I thank you for the opportunity for the courtesy review.
Let's see. Do we have any questions of the applicant or of city staff? I actually do have a couple of questions. I noted in your staff report that ATE indicated there were no traffic impacts. I've seen a lot of reports from them over the years. I don't think I've ever seen a report that said there were going to be traffic impacts. So I guess this is both a question and a comment. That intersection coming up from Coast Village That intersection coming up from Coast Village Circle onto Coast Village Road itself, particularly where you, it comes by Janine's and it comes out of the, whatever you call it, the bypass part there, you come into a crosswalk and then immediately Coast Village Circle meets it. In the evening in particular, you have valet parking at Lucky's, you have valet parking at Los Arroyos. There are no parking places immediately, usually available in that immediate area. So I, the comment and the, I guess, it's supposed to be a question, but I don't know how to phrase it exactly. It's how carefully have you reviewed the traffic patterns there at different hours of the day? Because I think there are some potential problems, not maybe that they can't be mitigated, but there definitely are some potential problems. And then I would offer the same comment related to the parking constraints. And it seems like for the restaurant, these are, according to your requirements, they're adequate, but again, I would look at what's going on and what the enforcement mechanism is to keep the seats at 42 and not have it creep up as it has in other places over a period of time where they add additional tables outside. So if you want to comment or respond, it'd be appreciated.
Like I stated in my staff report, the environmental review has not been determined as of yet. They have submitted these reports that are currently being reviewed in the DART process by our DART team, our land development team. Transportation staff has indicated that they have reviewed the report and were likely to accept the report, but I will raise your concerns before we finalize our letter and see if they have any additional direction to the applicant. As for the parking, our ordinance relates to indoor seating of the restaurant unless the outdoor seating exceeds 50%, and then we make them park the exterior seating for the restaurant. So we understood that 42 seats were inside the restaurant. He's saying it's a combination of both, so they are providing additional seating for outdoor seating, which would not be required by our ordinance.
They're, they're providing additional parking, not seating?
Yes, yeah, parking, sorry.
Mr. Colonel, do we, are we understanding that correctly, that the total seating for the restaurant indoors and outdoors is 42?
Well, I will tell you that the direction that we received, this is actually new information to us because the direction we received from transportation staff was that, that the total parking count would be counted indoor and outdoor, so we have expected that we would, we would respect, respect that count.
Let's stick with that interpretation.
That would make you happy. Sure, Alberto might like a few more seats, but, you know, at this point, I'm sure that that will all get completely flushed out relative to the planning commission conditions, but that was our understanding, was that we would be limited by that count, both indoor and outdoor.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just one question. Do the, I haven't read the transportation report. Is it envisioned within that report that there would be no parking on the street available? Or is it envisioned that there is some parking?
No, I mean, that's, that's really the advantage of this project, is that we are fully parking the, the project, but obviously, the project benefits from those 14 or 15 spaces that directly front the project, which currently are the spaces that serve, you know, Turk Heslin or Janine's or whatever is there. So I think it's safe because of those, those parking spaces to say that the project is overparked.
If I assume I'm at another restaurant on Coast Village Road, and I just happen to want to park in your parking space down below, will I be able to?
Well, you know, ultimately, control of these, these parking spaces is, is something that is probably a case-by-case. I would say if there really are the kind of parking problems that we're imagining may exist or will come to exist on Coast Village Road, we'll probably have to have some kind of a monitor, particularly at night, to be sure that the parking is used for our project. Now, that being said, you know, it's very likely that there's going to be, there's going to be conjunctive use here, that the office space and the retail won't be occupied during the night, which would free up more parking for the restaurant. But I think at the end of the day, that probably becomes an ownership management issue that's going to have to be dealt with if there becomes, you know, abuse of the parking. But we're not, we're not imagining that there's any kind of a control gate at this point. It will be, you know, at, at off-hours when the restaurant is closed, it'll be secured with a gate, so it's not a hazard, but that's all we've imagined.
Well, there will be some evenings where a lot of people will want to be parking in your spot.
Yeah, so we probably will have to have someone who is, you know, some kind of a service that will help control that.
Are the, are the seating, are the tables for the restaurant permanent, or are they, do they move depending on weather?
I mean, you know.
You'll have heaters, they will, they will be, you'll be sitting out there all year round. Is it covered?
No, 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 it's open. Yeah, I mean, we, as we showed on the little renderings that we would, you know, we've envisioned umbrellas and things out there, but one of the nice things about this is that it is on the north side of the building, so it won't get the direct sun like, you know, anything that's on the other side of Coast Village Road. You know, I wanted to mention one other thing, by the way, it's a little bit of a tangent, but it was interesting when we looked at the Turk Heslin Nursery, I never imagined this, but the entire site is asphalt. There's not a piece of ground on it, so that, you know, from a, from a ground standpoint, that's a, it's, it surprised me.
You're, I assume in response to that, I assume you're doing enough excavation that there's no contamination, environmental issue?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Idelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to again, follow up on the parking. The really, the, the issue starts around 6 o'clock or 7, and parking gets to be quite a, quite a serious issue out there. What I noticed, that the, the people that park the cars, a lot of them, they fill up the ones on the street, so that forces you to go back into other areas to park, and that seems to be developing by 5:30, 6 o'clock, and then really gets intense by 8 o'clock. And the people that park, so some people park clear across the street with inadequate lighting crossing the street. We had a serious accident there about 10 years ago. So parking is, is certainly a big issue, and it's, and the traffic in there, but I would really study that corner, as it was brought up by Chairman Overall, where the, the traffic is coming into and going out of Coast Village Road on, on your corner of your property.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's, and it's, it's obviously exacerbated by the fact that you have the little exit right there from the parking lane, and you, so you really sort of have that plus the regular three-way intersection coming together at one place.
Plus you have the pedestrian crossing. There's a lot to keep, with low light level, it's a lot to keep track, track of at night, Mr. Paladini?
Thank you.
Are we still in questions? I, question if you have it, but let's move on to general comments and.
Would you like me to begin?
Please.
Thank you. I made a couple notes here while people were making comments. First, I, just personally, and I think on behalf of the MBAR, would like to express our appreciation for the ability to comment on this. I think this, this agreement between the city and the county is, bodes well for Montecito for future projects on Coast Village Road, and it's a privilege to be able to participate in it. Couple of things that strike me, first of all, I think it's a very attractive project. I do think that materials and landscaping are going to be what the community experiences first. It's the most tactile part of this project, and I think it'll be the most obvious when you're approaching it on Coast Village Road. So I, I think it's really important, that's why I asked about materials, colors, finishes, landscaping, and the whole, the way those all work together is going to be very important. I think generally, I like the scale of it. It doesn't have, I was, when I first heard about this, I thought, oh, you know, if this is right on the sidewalk, it's going to be a monster, but fortunately, it's broken up, and I think the fact that the restaurant on the corner is a different scale than the rest of the building really makes it much more attractive. I will express concern about parking access, parking circulation, and as Commissioner Idelson mentioned, you know, who's going to use those spaces in that parking lot at night? It's going to be a free-for-all, and unless there's some control there, it will be adding substantially to the burden, I think, with a new restaurant on the rest of Coast Village Road, and I think could have a serious impact on business in general if people get so frustrated they can't park down there anymore. One last thing, I'd say special attention should be paid to construction parking. It's going to take, what, a couple of years to build this thing? And do you want to guess on that, Brian?
Well, I, I think that the reality is it probably would, the absolute maximum would be, you know, 16 to 18 months.
Okay.
And I'm sure we'd want to build it quicker than that, but that would be the outside.
Well, whatever length of time, I think, this area is incredibly impacted already during the day with just through traffic and what's going on on the freeway, so I'd say that construction parking could be adding to that problem. So special attention should be paid to that, and I'm not sure how you do that, but it's a difficult site to get to with heavy equipment, so that's, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Idelson? No, no comments? Commissioner Burrows?
I've given my comments, thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Gottskeker?
Well, I think it's a great project.
Okay. I guess that brings it back to me. I would again say thank you for being here this morning, and thank you to Diane for your efforts and help bringing it about, too. I would concur that I think the design and the scale of the project is tasteful, and I think the, the developers' cooperation with the different people you've met with is a example of the way we'd like to see projects come about. And I think, Ms. Regal, I gave you my two concerns which relate to the parking and the traffic. I'm heartened by the fact that there is, appears to be adequate under Mr. Colonel's understanding of the requirements. There seems to be adequate parking for the, for the restaurant, so that, I think that does help. So again, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before you go on this, can I ask one question I forgot to ask?
Certainly.
You mentioned 2,800 square feet of development rights transferred to this property. Could you tell me about that?
The applicant is proposing to transfer about 2,800 square feet from a different project that was within the city. They demolished the square footage, and they are transferring it to this site, so the development plan approval and transfer of existing development rights will have to be approved by the planning commission. And that's from the, is it from the Yanana Lee condos? No, it's a different Yanana Lee project.
No, it's from the, from the buildings, the commercial buildings that were there before the, the Yanana Lee condos were built, yes.
Yes, okay.
Just a quick question, follow-up on that, because it's something I'm not familiar with. Let's see, I don't want to phrase this. Does the city operate under what FAR guidelines like we do? Is, is there a, a standard threshold for the amount of development you would normally allow on this property?
The city does not have a maximum Florida Lottery ratio for non-residential development. They do for single-family homes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a question for Mr. Paladini. Mr. Paladini, when, when MBAR was reviewing this, did you get a sense that if we had jurisdiction over this property, this would have been a smaller project?
Well, we did not review it. It's not in our jurisdiction.
We'll not review it formally, but you, it wasn't discussed at your group?
Well, in very, very general terms, it was mainly reported out by Dave Mendro and myself, more to what we had personally experienced and what the comments of the land use committee were, as reflecting what the community's sense of the project was, but because it's not in our jurisdiction, not in our purview, we did not engage in a general board discussion about it, and there was virtually no comment.
We do have FAR for commercial use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I see.
That's.
I see.
That was it. Okay. Thank you. Again?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the courtesy review that your commission is undertaking was also extended to the full Montecito BAR. We were going to have a joint hearing today. Mr. Paladini was the only member who was able to attend, so this is where you would have received any additional comments from MBAR members.
Wow. Okay, thanks. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Colonel, thank you. All right. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? It's now 10:30. We'll be back at 20.
Mr. Chair, can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
That we just quickly do the next item, because we have somebody outside the department here, just to present real quickly some signs that you'll be seeing in the community, and it doesn't require any action of the commission. We'll just pull up the PowerPoint.
Will it take less than 10 minutes?
It will take less than 10 minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Paladini. Okay. Or number two, I guess it is?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a briefing regarding the Caltrans Highway 101 widening project.
Mr. Chair, I believe we'll just drop this from the agenda at this point, and we'll put it on a future agenda at your direction.
That's appropriate.
So do you want to?
Item number three?
Do you need to make a motion to drop it?
Do you need a motion on that?
Let's go ahead and take a motion and vote on that.
All right. I'll make a motion to remove the Highway 101 briefing from our agenda and rebook it in the future. Can I have a second?
Second?
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
All in favor.
Passes unanimously. Mr. Vialobos, you want to read item number three into the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a briefing regarding tsunami signage in the Montecito area.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, this is Jay McManus, Mick Amis, I'm sorry, from the Office of Emergency Services to provide you a little bit of information on some sites.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and commission members. I'm happy to be here this morning to give you an update on overall what is the tsunami-ready project for the operational area of Santa Barbara County, of which Montecito, of course, is one of those communities impacted by this. All right, so first, I just wanted to briefly address the members, our collaborators in this project from the state. They provided a bunch of subject matter experts in this area for tsunami planning and, and what really drove where we were looking for sign placement and, and public awareness in this project. So anyone from USC to the California Geological Survey, to the California Emergency Management Agency were involved in this process. We also had additional collaborators from Humboldt State University, a very prominent doctor up there that works internationally with the topic of tsunamis. UCSB here locally, we have quite a few active conversations ongoing with them in this area, as well as Dr. Jim Goltz from CaliMA, instrumental in this process. The history of this goes back a dozen years or more as the state was looking at refining the way it looked at the impacts of tsunamis on our coastline. And as you know, Santa Barbara coastline is roughly around 100, 100 miles of coastline, of which about 20 miles of that is, is impacted, impacts the community in Santa Barbara County in the event of a tsunami, with varying degrees. And they approached this from a modeling aspect. This is where the University of Southern California got involved. They started a modeling project. They didn't like how it was working out. They retooled the project and, and looked at it again. They worked on it for a number of years, and then came up with the map. They worked on it for a number of years and then came up with the maps that we now have that are published on our website that show the areas of impact for the community. We went through an actually pretty arduous process in addressing this and we looked at those impacted area. We had a team come from the state, the Geological Survey in CaliMA. We actually walked all of the terrain, all of the impacted areas personally to make sure that the modeling met up with actually what we saw on the ground and what our anticipated impacts were. And then we did post those to the website, so if you want to look at that. The signage that you'll see in the community as you go around, in Montecito, there are three locations. These are provided to us by the California Emergency Management Agency. We did not have a cost involved with those signs. The Parks Department is involved with putting those signs up in the public access areas, which is the only place that you'll see them right now, are those public access points to the beach. They're educational in nature and they are required by the tsunami-ready program, which is overseen by the National Weather Service and NOAA, which requires this as a component of the public education, component of the tsunami-ready project. These signs, as you will see, this is the first one. If you look at the Butterfly Beach Access, there's already an existing small sign there about the alcoholic ordinance. This sign is actually a little bit smaller than my notebook. It's a very small sign, very minimal impact, but it's designed to let people who are visitors to the beach understand that if they feel an earthquake that's hard to stand for more than 40 to 50 seconds, that they need to remove themselves from the beach. That is a local event which the reaction time to that is actually minutes, not hours, like we've seen in past tsunami events with a far source occurrence like we saw with Japan or Indonesia or Chile that we had a couple of years ago. So they need to be educated in that, in that process of if you're at the beach and you feel, this is just general purpose, and you feel an earthquake of that magnitude, that you need to remove yourself from the beach and move to higher ground, just as a status quo. And so that's the message that this sign portrays. The other, one of the other two locations is at the end of Eucalyptus Lane, at that beach access. And you can see here, it's going, it's actually, these are actually mounted. These slides were prepared before they were done. They actually are mounted now on the sidewall on the beach access. This sign is one of the larger signs and it's about twice the size of this notebook, so horizontally. They're about 15 by 18 inches, so they're not overly large signs. And actually, we expect a little graffiti on these. We're going to see little, probably little surfboards and, you know, little people riding on the wave. I think it's something that we expect out there. And then finally, the last location is the end of the lane of Posilipo Lane where they have that corridor that goes down for 100 feet or so. And at the very end, there's another one of those larger signs, of the 15 by 18 signs that are put up for the public to see. And again, these are just an education component of the tsunami-ready program. And you'll be seeing these go up in other locations, as well as for the City of Carpinteria, the City of Santa Barbara, and the City of Galita, and those areas that have been designated. There are some other types of signs that talk about moving into tsunami inundation areas and zones and evacuation route signs. You'll see those mostly in the downtown area. Hendry's Beach, for example, you'll see signs out of that area, East Beach, West Beach, the harbor area, you'll see a lot of those. In fact, there are two public meetings, both tonight and tomorrow night, to present this same information to them, but you're getting the first preview of what that looks like. And that's all I had, so if you...
Commissioner Idelson?
I have a question about, we've had a number of earthquakes in this area, having lived in California on the coast all my life. Have we got any evidence of something happening, say, in the 20s or back, say, the last 100 years on this coast? Anything about?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, actually, historically speaking, the largest known tsunami to impact this area was in 1812. It was in conjunction with the back-to-back 7.0, 7.1 earthquakes that everybody knows about, that they talk about people running to the mission and, you know, getting out of the way of that. You should recall or remember that at that time, there was a lagoon and the whole Lower East Side was a lagoon. It wasn't built up. And so the perceptions of how big that was has changed over time. It wasn't actually as large as what, you know, people remember it in the local folklore. There is some contention in the scientific community about what actually caused that local tsunami, whether or not it was a fault line outside of the islands, which there's, there is a fault line out there that is considered to be potentially a source of that, or an inland fault line, the San Ynez Fault Line or Lompoc Fault Line, which is actually the source of our largest earthquake in the county in 1927. There is some contention with that, but what we do know is that anything of that 7.0 or larger scale can produce a local event. That's what we know. And so our planning is based around that. But there are only a handful of faults that could generate that type of earthquake locally. Most of them do not have the ability to produce the energy that would be required to produce a local tsunami.
Commissioner Burrows?
I think the signage is really good. Is there any funding for making the signs in Spanish? I suppose the graphics are pretty self-explanatory, but for young children, I'm not so sure they would be.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, actually, that's a pretty good question, but these are nationally and internationally recognized signs. These aren't local signs. These are signs that have already been vetted through the international sign process. So if you were to go and see this, the whole idea is that depiction, the graphic depiction of what you're supposed to do, will be followed up by local training events and public literature and things that will be out in the community, but it's a visual recognition of that. I don't know that there's anything in the works, even statewide, to do that, to put them in other languages because of that.
Commissioner Phillips?
Go ahead. I think the signs are pretty clear. The thing it doesn't say, which is a question that occurs, is, okay, you get the idea that maybe it'd be a good idea to get off the beach, but where's the education to back up, say, where do you go and how high do you need to be?
You're actually, Mr. Chair, you're actually talking about the education process. So we work with all of the emergency management coordinators, the emergency managers in the different jurisdictions, who have started including this in their training and education doctrine. So whether it's Mirage with Montecito, I work with Jerry Ventura there in the Montecito Fire Department. We have an ongoing conversation in this process of trying to secure tsunami-ready status, and that is one of the key components. The education component of that is one of the things that allows us to get that designation by the Weather Service.
Okay, good. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, just to follow up on your question, which was going to be mine, just generally, how far inland are you talking about?
We do have...
Certainly not the mission. That's way too far.
That is correct. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I, we do have some data on that and it varies. And I know that's not the best answer, but depending on the type of event, whether it's a far source event or a near source event, the magnitude of the earthquake, the displacement underwater of any materials that might cause a large or, you know, a significant tsunami, those are all basically unknowns. The modeling has showed us that in most areas, we're actually well-protected on the coastline because of the cliffs. Most of the people up in those low-lying areas, you can expect in a local event of anywhere from 1 to 3 meters. So, you know, it all depends. And I hate to say it, if you live on the beach, I would be very aware of what your steps should be like it is with an earthquake itself. How should you react to an earthquake? You should also understand, if you live on the beach, that you should be reacting also to that because you're going to have minutes to react to a local event. If you feel the earthquake, that is your siren. That is your notification that the potential for an event could happen and that you should secure yourself and remove yourself from the area. So if you're on one of those beach homesteads or if you're in an area that's within that, you know, 1 to 3-meter level, I would put myself, at least, this is just me talking, we recommend people go on the other side of 101 as a, just a precaution. There isn't, Montecito is fortunate in the fact that it's a very small area that even would have an impact that we're aware of.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thanks very much. Oh, Mr. Idelson?
I just have one more comment. You know, I think the signs, all that, I think it's excellent. I think the education is good. I do have concern of overextending the concern to the point that when an earthquake happens and people do panic as a result, that they've got to get out of there right away and we can't handle them and then there are injuries due to evacuation and that sort of thing. So that it's reasonably handled.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, that's a really good point. And one of the things that we stress in the message is if it's an earthquake that makes it difficult to stand for more than 40 seconds, so there's a qualifier there. It's not just that it was an earthquake, it's that you had trouble standing for more than 40 to 50 seconds. That is the indicator that it could have the energy to be able to produce a local tsunami. If it's something like we saw in '77, '78 with that local 5.9, 6.0, that, I can tell you right now that that's not enough to generate a local tsunami. It would have to be something significant.
I guess my point is, you have a sign there, are people going to take their watch and measure 40 seconds? If they feel the earthquake, they're going to get frightened.
That's true. And I, you know, other than a robust education program, I'm not sure how we would address that. I think it all comes down to education.
Commissioner Burrows?
Following up on the educational component, I do, would suggest that that include preschool and the elementary school children. Wildlife Care Network now is a regular speaker in the schools in Montecito and around the city and county on the care of wildlife. We could do the same thing in regard to tsunami because young children, having raised a number of children, young children go to the beach at a very young age once they're able to swim. And just to include that down to kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, I think would be a real asset to the community.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, thank you very much. Yes, it is our intention to, across, through all of our emergency planning partners, to get that message out.
Thank you for your time. Let's take a 10-minute break and be back at 5:11. And we're going to have a shift change, right? Mr. Vialobos, if you would read item number four into the agenda, of the agenda into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the Montecito Planning Commission consider the following, 11 ORD 25, 26, 27, and 28, and to determine that the project is exempt, present to Section 15061b3 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Good morning, Mr. Lengel.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Montecito Planning Commission. You may remember back in 2009, when we brought this item before your commission, as well as the county commission regarding inserting into the ordinance provision that allowed the director of the Planning and Development Department to approve time extensions for approved permits based on hardship situations that were arising because of the economic recession that was in effect at that time. And so on recommendation of your commission and the county, the board did amend the County Land Use Development Code, the Montecito Land Use Development Code. This is Article 2, but that's a mistake, and that shouldn't be on there. They also amended the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance, as well as Chapter 21, to add in these provisions that allowed the director to grant a two-year time extension to existing approved permits due to economic hardship.
Just to be clear before you get into it, that was a two-year extension beyond the one-year extension that was already allowable, correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yes. And I'll get into that in just a couple of, well, I think one more slide. But just again, as far as background, the reason for this was to respond to the national recession and delays in obtaining permits that applicants were doing because they didn't want to have to outlay a large sums of money to pull the permits for a project that may not prove economically feasible at that time, again, due to the economy. So in order to lessen the possibility for these permits expiring and applicants having to go back through the process, again, this provision for the hardship extensions was put into the ordinances. And to answer your question, yes, the extension provided for was in addition to the existing extensions that were listed within the Montecito Land Use Development Code. It could be obtained either before or after those existing extensions were taken advantage of. In order to approve the time extension, the director would have to be able to make the original findings that were adopted when the permit was initially approved. And that decision of the director to approve or deny the hardship time extension could be appealed to the Planning Commission, in this case, within the Montecito Planary, to the Montecito Planning Commission. Because it was felt at that time that the economic situation would turn around within a couple of years, there was a sunset date included within that ordinance. Such are the provisions would be of no further effect as of January 12, 2002, which is rapidly approaching.
Mr. Lengel, before you move on, just to refresh our memories, or at least mine, go through the time allowable on the different permits as it exists in the ordinance with the provision for the extension.
I think I can do it. Coastal development permits and land use permits, we'll just lump them into one category. Once those permits are issued, then the existing provisions allow for a one-year time extension to those permits. Conditional use permits, the basic deadline is that within a certain period of time, the permit to effectuate the CUP, be that a land use permit or a CDP, must be issued. Normally, that's 18 months. A different time can be specified by the Planning Commission. And the time extension allowance for that particular deadline does not specify an outside time limit. For development plans, a final development plan is good for five years and one year can be granted, one-year time extension may be granted to that.
And after the review of a CDP or a land use permit here, the applicant has a year in which to pull the permit, correct?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. So we had a year plus a year extension, plus under the provisions that we passed back in 2009, a two-year extension beyond that.
The potential for another two-year extension, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
So the proposed amendment in front of you today would extend the timeline that this provision lives within the development codes from January 12 of 2012 next year to January 12, 2015, essentially adding three years onto the life of those provisions. It does allow the director to grant more than one two-year time extension if necessary, but there's a provision in the proposed language that spaces out these applications for time extensions so that an application cannot be submitted before, or can only be submitted within the six-month period prior to the expiration of that permit. In other words, somebody couldn't submit for a time extension in January, get that approved, and then submit for another time extension in February and try and get that approved as well. So again, it does space them out over time.
Let me make sure I'm following that. It has to be within the six-month period before the existing extension expires.
Correct. So if your permit, let's say, would expire in December of 2012, then starting in June... So, if your permit, let's say, would expire in December of 2012, then, starting in June of 2012, you could submit an application for that.
Got it, okay.
And this is also, so to sort of space out the review of these applications, to make sure that the findings, when the application, when the time extension is applied for, that the findings that were initially approved with the, let's say, original CUP are still appropriate, given the delay in time. The proposed ordinance does retain the existing provisions regarding that you have to submit the application prior to the permit expiring. Again, must be able to make the original findings, and again, the decision may be appealed to the Planning Commission. The amendment to the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance is a little different in that, as adopted, the MGMO does not provide, well, currently, it only provides for one 90-day extension. And then, in 2009, the provision for the two-year extension was added. There's no requirement, there's no ability to appeal that decision. And so, the current ordinance in front of you today just more or less continues that same approach and merely just extends the sunsetting of the ordinance to 2015. Also, we did notice in our review that there is a clause in the ordinance that limits what the amendments to the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance can entail. And it talks about things like to reflect changes in policies, changes in numbers of permits, or permits to be allocated, different point categories, things of that nature. And so, we're just adding a clause that includes amendments to allow the provision for emergency hardship, or for the hardship time extensions.
Mr. Lengel, again, before you move on, maybe we could clarify this one, because this is a little confusing for me. As I remember the Growth Management Ordinance, the fundamental premise of that was to space out development in the community, to allow the infrastructure and the variety of things to adapt to the increasing build-out in the community. So, you go through and you get a points allocation, and then you get, presumably, you fall within the number, and you can apply for a permit. So, how, what's the timing look like here? I've applied, and I get approval. I have the same one year? I'm not sure what the timeframes are we're talking about.
Chairman, overall, members of the Planning Commission, think back to my days of implementing the Growth Management Ordinance. Essentially, once you have your allocation for development in hand, there are two deadlines that you must then follow in order to preserve that allocation. The first is that within six months, you have to submit an application for design review to the Montecito Board of Architectural Review. If you've done that, then you have three years from the date the allocation is issued to pull your land use permit to build the house. And then, the processing, the permit deadlines for that land use permit would then take over at that point. So, absent those land use permit expiration dates, again, let's say, again, your allocation's issued in December of this year, 2011, you have six months to submit your BIR application, and then if you do that, you have three years from December 2011 to pull your land use permit. So, essentially, December of 2014.
Okay. Thank you.
After your hearing today, we'll be going to the County Planning Commission, similar amendments on November 2, and then on to the Board of Supervisors on December 6. So, the recommendation is to follow the recommendations and procedures regarding the four ordinances, the Montecito Land Use Development Code. You would be adopting a resolution recommending that the board adopt the proposed ordinance regarding Article 2. You'd be making a recommendation to the County Planning Commission that they recommend that the board adopt the ordinance. In regards to Chapter 21, because the, neither the county nor the Montecito Planning Commissions are really an advisory, are an advisory body, they're not an advisory body on this particular ordinance, you would just be giving us comments on that one that we could transmit to the Board of Supervisors. And then, the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance, you would be approving a resolution to transmit the recommendation for adoption of the ordinance to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
And I believe that's it.
Commissioner Idelson?
Yeah, okay, I want to, just to clarify it for myself. Suppose I had a permit, and I got a one-year extension. Now, I still have the financial hardship. What do I have to bring to the table in that six-month period in order to get this two-year extension?
Essentially, it would be submitting an application, sort of detailing what the project is, where it's located, and all that stuff. And then, some information, testing to the fact that you cannot proceed with developing that permit due to some individual hardship that's occurring because of the current economy at that point in time. The director, the director would then review that information and make a determination that if that was a valid reason, then the extension would be approved.
Well, we're saying it could very well be a different reason for different applicants, different conditions. It's kind of adaptive to a particular situation.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, that's correct. Each situation poses its own set of challenges, and, you know, it could be construction financing problems, it could be personal financial problems, whatever.
Okay. Now, this is, I understand, is within that six-month period?
That would, the application would be, yes, submitted within the six-month period prior to expiration of the permit.
Now, let's suppose that something happened so that I missed the six-month period. Does that mean I'm definitely out, or would I have to go to the supervisor or appeal? Or how could I ever think of getting an extension if I've already violated one of the conditions?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, if the application is not filed in a timely manner, in other words, prior to expiration of the, whatever permit it is, then that permit expires, and you'd have to submit a new application for a new permit at that point. Once the permit is dead, it's gone, and it cannot be extended.
Okay.
Mr. Lengel, two questions for clarification. Can you give us an indication of how many applications have been received for, under this provision?
Mr. Chair, since 2009...
Provisions, requests for Montecito?
Mr. Chair, since 2009, there have been 85 applications for time extensions overall submitted. I did not go through and divide those out between Montecito and the rest of the county. And I also did not go into each one and see, try and determine if it was a hardship request or a different type of exemption.
Care to hazard any guesses at all?
I'm sorry, you know, we just haven't done that thorough of research to tell you, give you good information on that.
Okay. And my next question for clarification. If there were an ordinance change that took place subsequent to the initial granting of the land use or coastal development permit or whatever, am I correct that that ordinance change would not apply to this project, to an appealed project?
Mr. Chair, are you asking if the change would apply if hardship or other time extension were applied for?
Correct.
I believe it would apply.
It would apply?
Yes. The only, the only applications in the county that I'm aware of that are sort of immune from changes in ordinances are vesting maps. Otherwise, we would need to make the same findings that were made originally, and those findings specify conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comp plan. Well, that's as it exists on the day you're making those findings.
Well, let me bring up a specific case, because I'm...
As long as it's not a specific case that's going to come before you, that's fine.
No, it's not, it's not. Within, I think, the last year, we had a case down on Miramar Beach. And one of the finest planners that you have handled that case. It came to us because there'd been a miscommunication on the timeframes, and they were late in, they'd been given incorrect information on the timeframe in which they need to apply for the regular extension, not the hardship extension. And there had been a change in the ordinance related to the height requirement. When we granted the time extension, the project was subject to the pre-ordinance change rules. We, the project would have had to change. It would not have been allowed under the new ordinance requirements. And I can give you the name of the project, if that will help, but, so I'm...
Mr. Chair, I think we have to talk about this one outside of the hearing room, because it could come back to you. So, it could.
Okay. I would say, from my standpoint, the answer to that question is pretty critical. I mean, I need to know whether ordinance changes do or don't apply if there's a time extension.
Mr. Chair, unless it's a vested permit, they do.
You used a qualify, qualifier there.
So, it's pretty difficult to, that's why I use the example that I used, which is a vesting map. Unless you've effectuated a permit, you've relied on that permit, you've done substantial physical construction and vested to that permit, then changes in the ordinance and other rules or regulations would apply. And I'm happy to look at the other issue offline, but I think that's, that's the whole purpose of reviewing time extensions, is to make sure that when a project is given a time extension, that the new rules are applied to it.
Because that certainly isn't what we did in that case. Okay, well, anyway, let's move on. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. In a request for economic hardship extension, how much information does the applicant have to disclose? Is it a specific disclosure?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, we're not asking for a full financial report. All we're looking for is sufficient information that will allow the director to determine that the need for the time extension arises from some sort of hard, financial hardship that's related to the economic downturn. This is much different than, well, for example, if you're requesting an exemption from the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance, and let me be clear, that's an exemption, you have to, you have to submit pretty detailed financial records as to why you have to be able to build a house outside of that ordinance. We're not as strict, certainly, with what we're proposing here today, and we have not been for those that we've granted. Again, it's just sufficient information to allow the director to make a reasoned and well-thought-out decision.
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Lengel, in the world of zoning theory, why do you think there's deadlines at all on building permits?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, essentially, it's so that permits and projects don't get stale. In other words, if you approve something in 19, or 2011, and it's not built until 2015 or 2016, then, as the chair recently brought up, standards might have changed within the ordinance. The community could have developed in a different direction than what the previous project was envisioning. And you just don't want permit approvals to be hanging out there forever, and then suddenly get built at some extended period of time into the future, that perhaps that project is no longer appropriate for that community.
But I could make an argument that the economic status today, or the economic condition today, is no different than it was two years ago, and perhaps maybe improved. Or assume I could do that. Then, aren't we forcing stale projects by doing this? And isn't it more stimulative for the community to have these projects go to shovel-ready or get going than kind of endlessly, possibly endlessly continuing it in terms of gross domestic product? I mean, is that what we're measuring? How do you, how do you get to economic downturn?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, I'm not even sure if that's a question or if it's a statement, but...
What's the reasoning behind, what's the reasoning to continue? If indeed we want, one of the objectives is increase property and sales taxes and construction, da-da-da-da, why not, why not not extend this? Deal with legitimate hardships as they come up. It may, it may, it may be that people will develop and create jobs.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, this is not a requirement that people obtain an extension for their permits. This is permissive. It's something that people can apply for if they find themselves in a situation where not, if they're not able to pull their permit, they're going to lose their permit. That's what we're really talking about. So, yes, we certainly want people to follow through on permit applications that they've applied for, but there are quite a number of people countywide, some in Montecito, some elsewhere, that just can't for one reason or another. Mostly, it's finance, you know, financing reasons. And what we don't want is for people to have gone through that process and lose their permit if we can provide them a reasonable extension and still make the findings. So, I don't think this is encouraging people not to follow through on their permits. In fact, a number of people are pulling their permits, but there are some projects in some small residential projects that are not happening. People want to remodel their kitchen, they decide that they just can't get refinancing, so they want to wait to do it. And some very large projects where they're simply not able to get the financing. So, it's kind of on both sides of this spectrum, but there are a number of people who are moving forward. And we certainly want to encourage people to continue to move forward if they can. So, this is really just permissive, it's certainly not a requirement.
Interesting how, when we are involved in the permit process, we never get to and cannot get to the issue of can you build this? Can you afford this? Do you have financing? We don't ever go there. But now you are, so, okay, good, thanks.
Any more questions for me? I'll make a couple of statements. I think to support this ordinance, you have to make a judgment about the future of the economy and where we are. I would, there are lots of authority to say that we're in a new normal. I don't know that we can project when a recovery, however you define a recovery, is going to be. I don't think we're going to return anytime soon to where we were in 2008 and 2007. So, what are the parameters behind this extension? If we give it today, are we going to give it again two years from now? I mean, where do we draw the line? So, that's, that's one question.
And, Mr. Chair, I think, I think really that's a policy issue for your commission and the Board of Supervisors to grapple with. It was, you know, our judgment that the worst of what we've been going through isn't over. We expected that it would be, that's why we projected 2012. Others in my department and in the world projected something much different. We took a more optimistic view, and it's, I think, whether it's the new normal or prolonging of the recovery that, you know, is just going to take longer is kind of yet to be seen. I hope it's, I hope it's the latter.
Well, as you said, it's...
But it's, but it's really a judgment call on...
It's a judgment call. So, I think there is that, that issue. I think there is a legitimate issue to be raised. If we really want to change the timeframes, then I think we ought to address it in terms of the ordinance and have a debate about, are our time, it goes to Commissioner Phillips' question about why do we have deadlines and all that. My sense is that's not what we're doing here. This is something quite different, and I think it's, my personal view is, I think it's premised on, on an assumption that we can't quantify, and that is the ending of a recession or the improvement of the economy. I'm disappointed that we don't have the data in front of us this morning about how many requests there have been. I also think it would be helpful to us if we had the data related... I also think it would be helpful to us if we had the data related to the number of new applications that have been applied in 2009, 10, and this, this, thus far this year, if any of those have been subject to this, kind of this request. And I'm actually not talking about the county, I'm talking about Montecito. And when I, I looked at the findings that were required to make, and 2.21 says it's in the general welfare of the community. I'm not sure it is. I rather think it is not. And what is it? 2.33 talks about that it is a good planning procedure. I don't think this represents good planning. I think good planning is either changing our ordinance or keeping it the way it is and not piecemealing, because I see no end to this, this process. So, personally, I, I, as far as Montecito is concerned, and there may be carve-outs, anybody that's in the system now that relied on the provision as they entered it, maybe you grandfathered them. I think certainly related to the, the T-fire. And I don't know what the issues are, I don't know if it's related to this. But otherwise, I think we had really solid planning provisions in place, and I, and I'm concerned about the, whether the ordinance revisions apply or not, so I, I'll bring that up again. But, anyway, for one, Commissioner, I, I would like this not to apply to Montecito. Commissioner Idelson?
Yeah, I, I guess the way I see this extension idea personally is that this isn't something that necessarily will be on the books 10 years from now. It could be that we'll, we'll have a recommendation from staff to remove it because we won't have enough cases. So, I don't, I don't, I really wouldn't want the, the basic ordinances to reflect new timeframe for all of the permits, but, but I, I look at this as something that's temporary to meet the needs at the, at the, at the immediate time. So, I, I don't really have that much of a problem with it.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. I do see the chair's concerns, however, my thought on this is it has been a terrific economic period for many people in Montecito, and I guess I don't see a definable downside on extending the hardship extension. So, therefore, I will support this.
Commissioner Phillips, you have your light on. Okay, Commissioner Gotts.
So, so, so let's just, to be really clear, I'm trying to get all of these times and numbers into my muddled brain, but if we approve this, the, the length of the, or the extension would be up to 2015, is that right? And then, and then the whole thing goes away?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gotts, this would allow for applicants to apply for two-year extensions in two-year increments until January of 2015. Those permits don't necessarily expire in January of 2015.
Goes out to 2017.
Seventeen, correct. It could go out to that far.
This particular.
Correct. And.
2015.
That you can apply for, yes. I'm looking at the, the data that, on time extensions, and, and Mr. Lengel is correct, you can't tell the difference between hardship, hardship versus non-hardship time extensions, but it looks as if in the timeframe that you requested, which is from 2009 to date, we've issued probably 15 time extensions in Montecito.
Of unknown nature, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It doesn't say. So, we, we could certainly do some additional research to get that information, but that's the magnitude of, of time extension requests that we've gotten, and some of those.
Commissioner Idelson?
Undoubtedly were hardship.
To, to what I see, during that period of time, the last three or four years, we've had quite a reduction in the value of property in Montecito. And, and of course, we know how the banking industry is looking at lending on houses and projects. So, they can be fairly small projects, just maybe a few hundred thousand, or they can be big projects. And I think that this is, that the situation has changed so dramatically for that person that was going to do that building, that, that this seems, seems quite appropriate. I, I feel it, it's okay for Montecito.
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, I, I'm concerned about the staleness issue. I'm concerned about the economic downturn language. I don't know how this will ever, ever end. I guess it, I guess at some point, we could see it's better today than it was yesterday, but whoop, three months from now, it's slipped back again. Do we put this back into place? I think I'm going to, on balance, go with staff's recommendation, though. I think, I, I trust that you guys can handle this. If this doesn't stop, we're going to have a serious staleness issue, and no one's going to remember who approved what and, and why. But I'm just over the edge, I guess, to support this.
Mr. Chair, if I could remind you to ask for public comment. We've gotten pretty far down the road of deliberation.
Good point, thank you. Do we have any speakers, Phillips?
No, we do not, Mr. Phillips.
I'll, I'll open it to public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to comment? I don't see any, so I will close public comment. Thank you.
No, I, I assume that there's no ex parte communications because there wouldn't be somebody to talk to really on this.
So, we're at the point where if somebody wants to make a motion, the chair would entertain it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll entertain a motion to adopt staff findings for a time extension due hardship ordinance amendment, which is A, B, C, and D in our staff report.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify? I think, I think what you're actually following is the recommendations and procedures in section 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.4. Is that right?
Yes.
So, is that what your motion includes?
Yes, that is my motion.
And that's what I seconded.
Thank you for the clarification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What? Do we have any, and, and I would appreciate a clarification on the ordinance amendments being applicable to these projects. Do we have any further business to conduct?
We do.
We do? We're, well.
We have special events ordinance and ordinance briefing.
Oh, my goodness, all right.
It'll be.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll get there, just give me a second.
Right there at the top.
Okay, Mr. Vialopos, we want to read it into the record. I was ready to go.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a briefing regarding the results of meetings held by Planning and Development Department staff with representatives of the special events industry and concerned property owners regarding developing regulations that will both address the needs of the special events industry as well as provide protections for
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this will be very quick. You may recall, when was it? Not that long ago, last summer, we brought before both the county and the Montecito Planning Commission a, a large package of ordinance amendments that addressed various concerns and cleanup items within the development codes. Included in those were proposed revisions to the sections that address the holding of special events or temporary uses on, on private land. Due to the, let's say, large amount of discussions and public testimony that arose in regards to those specific amendments regarding temporary uses, at their last hearing on the, on the general package, the county planning commission did direct that this department convene a group of professionals aligned with the special events industry as well as concerned homeowners to discuss the issues and the needs of the special events industry and the protection sought by the, by the neighbors. We did convene this working group. We met twice in the latter part of September, and the, it's interesting, the dynamic of the, of the committee worked very well together. I think everybody was on their best behavior to some degree, but we had some good and fruitful discussions, and more or less, the conclusions of those meetings were that we should retain the existing tiered permit system that we have, ranging from exempt permits to land use permits to conditional use permits, that the department should develop a tailored application package specific to special events that would include specific supplemental requirements, development standards, notice requirements, and fees. And that the department should return to the planning commissions early in 2012 to, with new ordinance amendments that would close the loophole that allows properties to be used as special event venues without having obtained the required conditional use permit, but also to create a simplified process, still discretionary, but under the jurisdiction of the director, to address one-time events of property for special events. And then also to develop an appropriate limit on the number of attendees that could attend a special event without having to go through the, the permit process. So, you may recall in our last go-around, we had proposed 25, anything under 25 would be exempt. That was felt to be too low in certain circumstances, so we would do more research and look at other jurisdictions and see what they have proposed. And that is it, essentially.
And what is it you would like from us on this?
Mr. Chair, comments, impressions, if you have any. We will be coming back to, to your commission and to the county planning commission when we've done a little bit more work. I guess it would be helpful to know if this is, you know, heading in the direction that your commission sees as appropriate. This is, this is essentially what you adopted before, with the exception of perhaps choosing a different limit on the, the floor of what qualifies as a special event. Right now, I think as you're aware, our ordinances say you can have 300 people at an event. Well, it doesn't say what the number of people you can have at your house is before it really constitutes a special event, so that was, that's what we're really trying to, to identify. Curious if the commission feels it would be appropriate to have a director-level discretionary decision that would be appealable to your commission for one-time events. There was a lot of concern about having to go through a planning commission hearing for just one, a one-time event, but if somebody wanted to establish, you know, a, a regular cadence of events, obviously, we would want them to, to come to the commission. Those would be appealable to the commission, those one-time events, if neighbors were particularly concerned. So, those are the sorts of things we're just looking for a little bit of feedback on if your commission has it, or if not, we'll do the best we can and.
Commissioner Idelson?
Yeah, yeah, I, I really feel strong that it should be at the staff level on this and not at, but the thing that I would like to see is a coordination between agencies. For instance, if you get a, if you get a request for road closure, say, well, then that would trigger, that it would come to, say, police, sheriff, and it would go to, to planning and, and maybe fire department. See, like, if you get tents of a certain size in Montecito, well, it has to be permitted through the fire department, to see if that's safe, so that somehow there's a good coordination. So, if we hear one thing, then it automatically, that triggers it and it goes to the others. But I really think this should be, with few exceptions, should be at staff level. It should not have to go to a commission for, for some kind of approval. It just, it gets to be too onerous and, and it's not fair, but I do think we've slipped up in the past by not having good coordination.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond. I should have probably let the commission know that the, the county executive office is working on a more coordinated approach to dealing with events throughout the county, because there are a, a number of events that don't require permits from us. They're either entirely within road right-ofways, they don't trigger the requirement for a permit because they're a charitable event. For, for whatever reason, they don't require a permit from us, and yet, there are still other departments that are quite involved, and so we want to make sure that that effort is coordinated, even when we don't have a permit that we're, we're issuing, and we are working on that as well.
I guess the one comment that I would have is, as in a lot of things, I'm concerned about enforcement. You know, we're, we're, at this point, we're largely totally dependent upon complaints from the community to trigger it. And I don't know whether stiffer fines or, I don't know what the answer is, but I would hope when you come back that some thought, additional thought would be, had been given to that, because it's a bit of a burden on the community to have a neighbor rat out their next-door neighbor. Any other, Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Black, I don't want to take us longer than we have to be, but could you refresh my memory as to what freedom I might have as to renting out for-profit my home to a third party for an event? In a residential zoning district.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, that would require a conditional use permit.
It would.
Today, it requires a conditional use permit. We're proposing that it, it continue to require a conditional use permit. The only exception is, if you only want to do that once, then we want to create a process where that's still a discretionary decision, but the decision is made by the director and is appealable to the commission instead of having to come first to the commission. But if you want to establish your home as a regular event venue, you want to have a wedding a month at your house and make that available to people to rent, then you would need to get a conditional use permit, and that would come to your commission.
Butterfly Beach is a big part of our beach for Montecito, and is that, is that private property, do the landowners own that, and then we have rights of way on it? Do you recall how that works down there?
To the mean high tide line.
Well.
It's hot, yeah. It's not exactly public.
I don't know if there are official dedicated easements on Butterfly Beach. I would, I would have to do a little bit of research. I can tell you that below the mean high tide line is property that's owned by the State of California on behalf of the people. Between the mean high tide land and the land is typically, typically runs with the property that it adjoins, but there are lots and lots and lots of dedicated easements in those areas. I just don't know the particular situation. I mean, obviously, it's a well-used beach.
Active, thriving wedding business going on down there. I was, I have a great picture on my iPhone, I was greeted with Grecian columns going down the staircase, and it's, I don't know if it's bothering anyone at this point, but should we become the wedding destination of, to the world? This, this is going to be a problem. It's going to be a problem. It's already pretty big down there now. And I would guess the property owner would have to, it would be their responsibility to kick them off their, I don't know how that would work. But if, if that permit would apply to the beach areas, that would be a positive thing, I think.
Mr. Chair, we'll certainly look into that.
Well, the other, the other, interesting, it's the same area that you're pointing to where there, where recently, I kind of came up with a concern, is that the relationship, when you say rent your home for an event, it, the information that I got is that, is that some of the wedding planners, people, who, where the wedding literally is, may, is at the Biltmore, you know, but the, everything else around the wedding is like, is in homes that are for rent in that area. So, that when you have, as we did in the community, where a whole number of guests are come in, now it turns out that the wedding planners are looking for homes to house and have cocktail parties and whatever they're having in that general area, all tied to the Biltmore Hotel, which becomes more, more traffic, more of everything. And that's something I think you should look into. everything. And that's something I think you should look into.
And, Mr. Chair, I think that will be encompassed in that loophole at Knoll that we talked about at some length before, where people are renting their properties as a vacation rental and then hosting events, whether it's the wedding, whether it's the bachelor party, whether it's the, you know, rehearsal dinner or cocktail parties or whatever. That's where that, that number, that floor is going to be really important to incorporate into the ordinance. And-
Yeah.
And the, the commercial nature of that will, will trigger the-
Yeah, because it just happened that a, a friend of mine who does, used to do weddings, she now lives up in Sacramento, but she had a client who, she did it. And she literally volunteered that she had rented five residences for a day, the weekend, as vacation rentals. And, you know, and it's like, well, wait a second. There is a concern over here for the community, you know, that those are single-family residences.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify?
Please.
We are not proposing to go into the vacation rental realm in this particular package. We're really focusing on-
On events.
Special events, but, but the interaction between special events and rental for, you know, weekends, weeks is a really key one. And that's where the loophole seems to exist currently in our ordinance that we really want to close.
You're aware of it.
But we're not going to continue and go further and try and regulate special events, at least not at this point.
Commissioner Burrows?
I mean, vacation rentals. Excuse me.
Thank you. Could you please give us an overview, just a brief overview, on the use of a, a private property for a charity event?
Sure. In Montecito, is it three events? People can have three private or charitable events on their property a year of up to 300 people. So, you can allow a charitable organization to hold an event on your property when there are under 300 people there, as long as you haven't had two others in that year. So, that's the limit.
Are there restrictions, because they don't have to get permits, are, are there restrictions on amplified sound?
Mr. Chair, no. Just the, the general noise ordinance that the county operates under. So, they could have amplified sound. It can't constitute a nuisance, and it's enforced through law enforcement.
I, I would, I would suggest that you look at that provision as you look at this. For anybody in particular who lives uphill, amplified sound does make a significant impact. And it can be actually a long ways away, but just a thought. But, Mr. Idelson?
Do you have an approximate or an actual number to call at an event? I mean, like, if you have 25 people over, would, you know, some number that you would suggest?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, when we, before your commission, before, we suggested 25 as kind of the floor of an event. So, if you hosted a dinner party with 12 couples attending, that would not be considered a special event. But once you, you know, cross that threshold, it would be. We did, did receive some comments, I think mainly at the County Planning Commission, that 25 might be a bit low. People do have large families, and we certainly don't want to trigger a special event when people have a family get-together. But, you know, it's, it's kind of a compromise that we, we just need to reach. So, I think we're looking at between 25 and 50 was a suggestion.
And you would be looking for input from us at the, at the hearing? Okay. Clear. Any additional comments? Now can I close the meeting?
Any public comment, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
On this item, is there any public comment?
I thought we did that. Any public comment?
No.
Any public? No, no, no comments.
Great.
We'll close it. Thank you very much. And perhaps we'll see you in December, if not January.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I neglected because I just focused on the County Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission when I'm doing the review of the projection report. We do have a holiday luncheon scheduled for the planning commissions, your commission obviously included, and that is scheduled for December 7. You will be receiving some information about it, but I did want to point that out.
Okay.
So, I think that's-
That's it?
It. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.